City Commission, Thursday, October 18th, 2018, 7 o'clock PM. Marine City Fire Hall.
Let's call the City and Marine City Commission Meeting to order, Marine City Fire Hall, Thursday, October 18th, 2018, 7 PM. Let's take a few moments of silence for our dearly departed. The House, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hand roll call, please.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Present.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callison.
Here.
Commissioner Lepley is absent this evening. Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City Manager Levin.
Here.
All right, let's move on to...
Can we make the motion to excuse Commissioner Lepley to call issues?
Yes. Motion in support to excuse Commissioner Lepley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Carry on, moving on. Communicating, uh, communications. I need a motion to receive and file the cartonal activity reports, election commission meeting minutes, July 11th, planning commission meeting minutes, September 10th, Clark Hill of CBS license transfer, MDOT transportation funding, FOC grant application support letter, and MCAS grant report.
I make a motion to accept and receive communications A through G, as presented.
Support. Motion in support. Any questions on communications? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address, but please limit your comments to five minutes. Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Joe Moran, 710 Pleasant Street. I'd like to start by thanking the folks that came out to the forum on the village on Monday. They had a very good discussion, turnout, and it was a very positive thing for the city. Couple of things came up that I want to speak to or clarify. We were talking about the roads that needed to be resurfaced, and Mike Hendrich gave us a figure of approximately 20 percent of the roads in the city, the remainder being either not in need of resurfacing or requiring infrastructure changes in order to be done. One of the participants made a comment that if we're only doing 20 percent of the roads in the city, why are we asking the other 80 percent of the people in the city to pay for that? And we discussed that, and there was a free exchange of ideas. It wasn't until I got home, however, that I realized we were talking about apples and oranges. We talked about 20 percent of the homes, and we're not talking about the other side of that equation being 80 percent of the residents in the city. As it turns out, those roads that we're going to be repairing directly impact about 30 percent of the residents in the city. And when you consider that a good portion of those roads that we're resurfacing are roads like Elizabeth, Bell River, which we've already done, Metropolis, Third Street, longer theater roads that impact many of the other streets in the city, you're going to add perhaps another 20 percent of the residents here in town. So rather than talking about 80/20 equation, we're looking more than, more like about 50 percent of the residents in the city being directly or somewhat impacted by those road changes. Another 20 percent that was brought up was that the, uh, the, uh, the village was going to raise people's taxes by 20 percent. Well, we need to clarify that, which we did at the forum, but I'm going to do it again. We're raising the city portion of the residents' taxes by 20 percent. 3.29 mils, which for 50 percent or better of the people in the city amounts to about $13 a month. This is not a tremendous impact for most of the folks here in town, but it will have a tremendous impact in the town as a whole if we get this passed and get our roads done. We were also asked why we didn't have a longer, more comprehensive 30-year plan. Well, those of us that worked on the infrastructure committee did consider as far out in the future as 20 years, 30 years, and we realized there's no way that we can talk about that reasonably for two reasons. One, we have no idea what condition the roads are going to be in over that time, and two, we have absolutely no ability to fund that kind of a long-term project. The city receives about $50,000 a year from state and county funds to, to go towards its roads. That's not going to stretch very far in a single year. We have a debt ceiling of only about $11 million placed on the city, which prohibits us from getting any kind of long-term bonding that would cover a 20- or 30-year program. So we have done just about absolutely everything that we can do to put together this five-year plan and to get it funded with the village. If you have a better idea... Where is it? If you have money in your pocket somewhere, how much have you got? We have yet to have people come forward and say, "Oh, we have a better idea. Here's the money. Here's a better plan." This is the plan we have moving forward. If we don't get this passed in November, we are kicking a very explosive can down the road. We cannot afford to put these changes off or these repairs off any longer. The roads get worse as time goes by, and the costs of repairing the roads up. We have an opportunity to make significant changes in our town's infrastructure moving forward. Those changes cannot help but improve the overall attractiveness of Marine City for either businesses or residents. We're foolish if we don't do it. Thank you very much. We don't have a mic for you, I'm sorry.
Fern Lawn's Way, 140 Bell Avenue, Marine City. I moved into my home October 1st of 1981, and I'm curious to know if this tax increase is going to do anything for my growth. It has had nothing done to it since I moved in. Every road from Ward Street to Sartier was paved a few years ago, except for one block. And why would I raise everybody's taxes if I can't get part of it?
What road was it again, ma'am?
140 Bell Avenue.
Some of that was paved through TIPA funks, and it couldn't go any further due to, um, it was out of the TIPA zone.
Yeah.
And there was upgrades to the water and sewer. We wanted to do what we couldn't do if they needed.
But nothing has been done on that road in all the time I've lived there. I mean, it's like that block is just forgotten.
There's a number of them that are the same condition. Even where I live, those roads have never been touched since I lived there since '84.
Well, I've got three years on yet.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, but that was one that had a, they had a village before I bought, and I had to pay that off. What they did was they taxed you per front foot, and they, that's when they paved all the roads in this town, because there was a lot of dirt roads at the time. So people were paying all that off. So if you had a dirt road, you were paid by front foot.
We have sidewalks that are jolted. We have, how did someone get property in town without a sidewalk? You have a sidewalk here and a sidewalk here, and you don't have a sidewalk.
Yeah, there's a lot of those in that area.
I'm aware of that, but I can only get around by sidewalks. I'm not happy. I also have a parking problem on my street. I have the only home without a driveway because there's no place to put one. But I have neighbors with two and three-car driveways that think they can park in front of Fern's house because it's convenient for them. Is it possible they did it made handicap in front of my house?
I don't believe so at this time in this community. We'd have to actually look into that, because I don't know if we can.
Well, I'd like to, because if you can, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Melvin.
408 Burl Street, Brandon Millie. Um, I'm just going to be brief. A lot of times, people don't know who's the candidates, and it just so happens this coming Tuesday, the 22nd, is the time to meet the candidate. Monday, I'm sorry. Thank you. Monday, the 22nd, at least I've got the right date. But at 6 o'clock at Washington Elementary, and, um, or, and it's not real elementary school anymore.
Boston Life Center.
Life Center, excuse me. I'm from the past. But anyhow, it's an opportunity to meet the candidate, and you can shoot bullets at them in the sense of, uh, of what's their agenda, what's their ideas, what they want to do, and you can target a candidate if you so desire to get some kind of ideas what he's made of or she's made of. And it's just an opportunity, uh, to meet other residents. And there's also going to be some drinks and some, um, understandably...
Pizza.
Pizza at there, which I was surprised, I didn't know that was going to be there. So basically, it starts at 6 o'clock, but the, the forum will be at 6:15, but they have 15 minutes of grabbing something to eat, you know, just a little snack, and it's about, it's going to last for about an hour. But it's just an opportunity to, if you have a specific question to a candidate, why he's running, uh, to me, I'm kind of disappointed that, uh, the voice, I haven't heard any information about having something in the voice about me or anything, or even the, the other newspaper, uh, the Times Herald, and I just feel like, oh gee, you know, I, I guess maybe it's up to myself to get out there, and I want to promote myself, of course. But it's just an opportunity to, to see what can happen when the community gets together and get them know the commissioners. You're going to be voting them into office, and it's something that they're going to represent you. And it's nice to know what they're really standing for and what they want to stand for the people or what they, what their agenda is. And as far as the roads go, um, I would like to say, you know what, it's a, it's a plus, 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 because it does raise the value of your home, having good roads. People look at that when they come to buy into our town. I just wanted to say that, you know, um, far as, you know, I'm very sorry if, if your road is not going to be taken care of. I don't know, but I do know it was such a blessing seeing Diverse paved, and it was so bad, and that's a major throwaway road that people go through and travel in the morning. And I just want to say thank you for letting me present myself.
Anyone else?
Look forward to seeing you the 22nd, Monday.
Michael Ryan, 2525 Woolworth Street. Uh, if Marine City creates, some questions are bound to get very different answers depending on who you ask. Does, does that have to be the case? Should Marine City be great for everyone? If elected City's mission, that would be my primary mission, to make all of Marine City a beautiful, thriving, safe place for everyone, from children to retirees. Or it is these two demographics that should be the most coveted in our city, and these two demographics have given, have given a lot of, uh, short end lists they're making. Uh, these people are our past, they're our future. One without a city as we know it would not exist. It is this embrace of both new and old that encourages greatness to flourish. Without respect for the past, great societies such as Egyptian and Roman empires would not have yielded the great new technological advances and in turn raised success and growth and growth that they enjoyed in their time. It is through this same formula that Marine City has enjoyed its own great success and growth. Through Marine City's long track record of historic preservation, we now enjoy a city that has truly become a destination comprised of gorgeous old building-sized Victorian homes and a welcoming walk-in downtown. Couple of these historic comments with those that knew, such as our delicious restaurants and beautiful town theaters, and we have a genuine attraction for those to visit our city. Ask these visitors what they think about Marine City, and they may reply with words like impressed and very galling. However, ask a resident what they think about Marine City, and they may hear a much more disappointing review full of disappointment and desire for better. We as a city, and you as the city's leaders, are at a real crossroads. Similar to our real roads, the familiar figurative road we have been traveling is becoming impassable. We must choose a new road. The path we are currently on is not sustainable. We simply cannot continue down San Francisco Road. We absolutely must go in a different direction if we have any hope of addressing our nearly $30 million of infrastructure developments. Bottom line, we need more revenue. What is the most alarming to me personally is that there is no plan. There's no answers to the problems we face. We recently, as recently stated by the infrastructure committee, there is no Plan B if the village fails. We need a Plan B, because as plenty of you witnessed at the road news forum, the overall reception of the current plan was actually not good. So, what's my plan? We need to invest in our future. Um, we got to bring a economic development director on board, um, you know, somebody whose sole job is to increase revenue, um, make us money, you know, go after the grants, bring in business. We already paid $24,000 a year for a grant player that has done nothing. Um, so, you know, filling that gap between 24 and, what, 68 wouldn't be that hard to fill, um, you know, especially with the tip of it being solved. A lot of the things that they did had to do with economic development, so we do really fill that gap. And I think if an economic development had, would, uh, would do that. Um, we got to take advantage of our current resources. Um, you know, there's a lot of great things in town that we had, we're very blessed with, you know, the river, the beach, um, boundary even, you know. We, we don't make any money from these things. Um, you know, so, you know, tourists come here, they use our roads, they use our facilities, and overall, they don't really pay anything. And us as residents are stuck with footing the bill for that, and that's not fair. Um, so I think, you know, some sort of tourist taxation needs to take place, whether it be parking fees, beach fees, entertainment, lodging fees, downtown businesses are taxed, something like that. Um, because overall, if you think about it, it's mostly tourists that are enjoying these things. Residents, yeah, here and there, but it's mostly tourists. Um, and people, uh, yeah, I mean, we need, we need something back from all the help that we've given the businesses. I think we've been very generous to the businesses, and I think it's kind of time for them to, you know, give something back. And guys, I'm going to say, you know, the elephant room, uh, something that you haven't really addressed, it's come a few times in the past, but the marijuana industry is kind of, um, you know, I know it makes a lot of people uncomfortable, but these aren't dirty beer legs that are, you know, smoking marijuana anymore. You know, it's your grandma, it's, it's your neighbor, it's, it's your aunt, you know, but it really gets, that's the absolute fact. And I think come November, you know, with respect to the boat, it'll be easier to see that. Um, you know, it's projected that the state's going to make $230 million in revenue from recreational marijuana. 15 percent of that will go to cities, um, and another 3 percent on top of that can be actually taxed by the city. So, you know, I know it's a lot of questions with this plan, but, uh, you know, if we don't start asking these questions and asking them now, we're going to lose out on these opportunities, and I think we'd rather be to get this, these plans in motion.
Anyone else?
Night, ma'am.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, Charles Signering, 224 North Elizabeth. Good evening, Commissioners, and Mr. Mayor. I really didn't have anything planned to say to come up here tonight, but since Mike and Ray came up and did a nice job, I'm hitting a lot of different topics there. I'd like to say there is a Plan B. We haven't got it all together yet for the roads, but I'm working on it. I'm meeting with some people tomorrow. Um, I hope on Monday, I'm going to try and get ahold of the City Manager and present her with something for you guys. Um, may work, it may not, but it's, it's an idea that I believe, um, something that we can do to help, and that is the TIPA Board. I know it's, I'm beating a dead horse. A lot of people feel that way, there's a lot of people that don't. But come January, it's going to be too late. But January starts a new law that went into effect, the governor had signed in May, which we were not aware of till September. We also heard from some professional people on different ideas. Uh, there's a lot of different ideas out there and different interpretations, but I feel that, um, if we can move districts around and, and come about, um, a new plan with the Planning Commission, City Commission, and the TIPA Board together, I think that we can, um, actually come up with a plan that would fix these roads, help fix them. We definitely need to get this village passed, folks, that's, that's for sure. Um, like Mike had said, Ray, uh, you know, I don't believe Mike is really for it because it's a little costly, and I agree that it is costly, but we cannot afford not to. And, um, if the TIPA Board wants to remain and work with the City Com, uh, Commission, I believe that that would be an added bonus to get these roads fixed quicker and come up with a plan, uh, to get that done. We also have to look at our budgets in the city. Police budget's over $650,000 a year. Um, we have a fire authority that has done a great job. I'm, I'm really happy with it. Um, I think we need to look at a police authority. I've said that for about a year now. Um, again, I've, I've done some research on that, and I'm looking into that also. Um, I haven't gotten with the chief yet because I don't have all my ducks in a row, but I am looking at that. That is a huge part of our budget in the city, um, that we have to address. We also need the City Hall. We have no City Hall, and that's something that I think should be on top of the Com, uh, Commission's list of things to do in the near future. We have a town hall, we heard from the residents, um, the mayor did a great job on that in, in coming together with you guys, sitting around here, and, uh, we need more of them, I think. So, um, I, I think everybody's doing a good job. It's not pointing fingers at nobody. I think we need to do what's right for the citizens and, um, do our job. And just so people know, this is not a paid position. These are all volunteers, pretty much, and, um, there's a lot of volunteers in the planning committees and all these other committees. They're looking for volunteers tonight and, um, for some of these boards, and we need people's help. We need people to think out of the box, come and, uh, come to these meetings and, uh, and help this board. We all need help. Thank you so much.
Anyone else like to speak? Moving on, we're going to move on to approval of the agenda, but before we do that, we need to make a subtraction on the agenda. We won't be going into vote session for the City Manager's review due to we haven't got all the paperwork done yet, so please take that off on your motion.
Make a motion that we approve the amended agenda.
Support.
Motion in support. Any questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Next, I need approval for the City Commission meeting in October 4th, 2018.
How much will Washington approve the City Commission regular meeting in October 4th, 2018?
Support. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? Moving on, all, all in.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, next, we're going to move down to new business. Resolution number 024-dash-2018, waived penalties for non-filing a property transfer affidavit.
This is something that has been common practice in the office, that we have not charged a late fee for people that bring their property transfers into the office. The state actually for residential properties has, I can't see it in there, um, has a provision in there that we can charge $5 a day for a maximum up to $200 for people that file late. Um, most communities in the county and probably even the state don't do this. I feel that it's kind of a slap in the face, someone that's coming to move here to the city to charge them a late fee. This is something through the audit of the assessors up at the county, they've been looking into to see if there's any type of resolutions or anything communities have done in the past. So they are requesting us to pass this resolution if so is our option.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Any arguments which we have that we don't enforce are meaningless. I think it's about time, I, I didn't understand even what this really said, but thank you, City Manager, for explaining that. We're not doing it duty if we don't enforce a law. This doesn't require police or anything else. This is something that we do. I think we should vote yes for this. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion for it, then?
Yes. I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 24-dash-2018.
Support. Motion in support. Any questions? Yes.
All right, so normally, most people file up to the county, so you're saying if they don't come and tell you also, then you're going to file a late fee?
No, actually, they're required to file at our office with our assessor. They could file up to county, but they're supposed to file at the local unit, so that would be in our office. We haven't been charging, the county hasn't been charging, so this in essence is something that is a matter of paperwork per their audit.
So if they go up to the county and they file, and they don't come down and tell you they filed, you're going to charge them a fee?
No. Neither one would be charging a fee.
And you're saying nobody else is doing this?
No, I'm saying everybody else is. No, I'm saying everybody else is.
Yes, Ms. President.
If a resident is supposed to work through the local government, then filing with the county may be fine if you respect the county and come back and tell us. We have this regulation, if they don't file here, then they're violation of this law. We operate under a situation where ignorance of the law is not a justification for ignoring it. We face that with so many things. Sometimes, kind of, perhaps ridiculous, but in this case, we're supposed, we live in a city, we should act like it. We choose to live in a community, and this is the beginning of our political identity.
Yes, Ms. President.
Why would the county accept their paperwork? Why wouldn't the county just tell them the way it's supposed to be done? That you should be filing with your local authority? That's right.
So, we actually contract with the county for our assessing, so in essence, the county could take it, but generally, people grant to the local authority. But because we have this relationship that we're contracting with the county, it is permissible.
The problem is, we wouldn't know it, right? We wouldn't know if they filed with the county. That's the issue. Yeah. So, it seems to me like the county should be explaining to them that they need to file with the local, not at the county level. Could that be fixed by just, you know, working with the county to tell them?
Well, in essence, what they could do is, is take it at the county, give it to our local assessor, and it really achieves the same thing.
Okay.
So you can bring it back to the office. You would have to probably bring it back to the office to file it. So, like I said, the state has these rules in place that we have the ability to charge $5 a day, up to $200 max, for late filings. And we can, by choice, choose to waive that fee if we want to.
But they could have filed at the county level and not be late, and you wouldn't be aware, right?
Right. We have never sent out anything.
Seems like a disconnect there somehow.
Yeah, we've never sent out anything for late notices, nor has most of the county. Even when I worked in open township, we never penalized people either.
When our last time closed on a deal, they, when we were signing, they said, "You mean to get this in within 45 days, or you could be charged a fee," but they said, "Most, most communities are not charged, they're waiving the fees."
As I said, it's kind of a slap in the face. You have new residents that come, move into the community, and, you know, they're five days late on filing their property transfer. Welcome to the city, you owe $20 for filing late. It's not really something, I think, that we want to get in the practice of doing.
But they're also looking, when they turn it in, they're looking for a tax break because if they turn in the affidavit, they're allowed for the homestead act.
It depends on if the property was homesteaded or not. And anything like that would be worked through the board of review for appeal.
It's their benefit to file.
All right. Any other questions or concerns? Roll call both, please.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we're moving on to the museum of old objects.
Commissioner, I want you to approve the late fees for the King Road.
Any questions?
Got a question, but since it's been supported, I'd like to thank the citizen that made this generous donation to our museum.
Any other questions? Roll call both, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we're moving on to the King Road Park grant opportunity.
The Community Foundation has put out a call for grant applications for mixed-use court, courts and fields, I think. I can't remember the exact language here. I had Mike actually kind of put together some general numbers for estimates of what it would be to make some improvements over at the King Road Park. First and foremost being making the basketball court able to accommodate a small ice rink. Also adding a pickleball court, an asphalt court, and a shuffleboard court. We also got some quotes in the estimate for a set of cornhole games, and then also some miscellaneous costs for sidewalks. The Community Foundation grant is a matching grant, so for $10,000 grant, we'd have to pitch in and pay the other $10,000. There also is a small amount, let me get this section four, $5,000 from the county that we would potentially be eligible for, so if we did not get the full $5,000 from Community Foundation, we could potentially tap into the county parks and wreck for an additional $5,000 to help match. Not necessarily looking to go for everything that's in this plan, I'm just kind of looking for some feedback if this is something that we're interested in pursuing and using some of our recreation funds for, to be able to improve the park over there and add some extra facilities.
Any one have any, yes?
Since there was a huge discussion about shuffleboards, they used to put that too long ago, and you now have one, because we used to have the ones uptown that came up on discussion. So, yeah, it's nice to see that if, if possible, that we may be able to get all that in there to add more into the community, so it gives everybody a little bit more to do for the kids and the community.
Are you looking for a motion, or?
Just looking for support to move forward with a grant application, and if there's any potential changes that you would like to see, and any deletions, anything? Obviously, if we do get the grant, this would be coming back for approval and probably further vetted plans.
I think we should support the application process, understanding that it's a liability then that we have to come up with some matching funds up to have. And that will be an obligation that the next commission will have to face should this come out.
I'll support it.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Moving on to intergovernmental agreement for sewage disposal for Chinatown Township.
This agreement was actually something that had been approved a number of months ago. There is one property owner that would like to be included in this agreement, and that would be the corner property on the northwest corner of King and 26 Mile. This was before the Chinatown Township Board, and it's been approved, so they're just looking for us to approve it. Mike has no issues with adding this additional parcel.
So, because that song commercial just said residential at one time, so he scratched out all the residential?
Yes. And because it's a vacant parcel, so I think he actually added some of the vacant parcel language as well. But that's the only change with this contract, is adding that parcel.
So, if the vacant lots that are in there, they're not going to run anything to them for, like, they'll be, if they sell that lot and they're not letting anybody tap onto that sewer line?
The only parcel that's included in this contract is just that one parcel. That's it.
Looks like there's a couple of vacant properties here.
It just says all parcel owners. So, it goes from the corner up down to wherever you stop?
Just that corner parcel that we're adding, that's it. One, one corner parcel.
And everything else we've already been servicing?
It's, this is a new contract for sewer service. Little bit of backstory is because they have failing septic systems that aren't able to support anymore, and the DEQ has mandated that they do something about that. So, with us having sewer systems so close to Chinatown Township at that point, they were working with us actively to be able to help serve those people in the situation.
Right now, they would, they're, they have a working relationship with East China, but it would cost East China between $5 and $7,000 to get enough sewer capabilities for that area. So, it's just helping them out right now to, so people don't actually get their house to come down. I think it's a good process to help another community out, and we can then sell them water and sewer, which we need to sell water and sewer, increase our capacity some. This agreement is just for sewer, isn't it?
Yes.
Where they already purchased water from. And they do need to update that water, their water line, and they are working right now, but at least discussing it right now, because they believe that whole block where it's only water service, and somebody uses a lot of water in the front end, and at the back end of the block, you may not get a warm shower.
Kind of have pressure issues with the water, in particular, at the end of the line, and that is something for China to work out, if they want to operate that line at the same time or not.
Yes, Ms. President.
I make a motion that we accept this proposal to add to the acceptance that we did for all the other spots, and it makes sense that we should do that.
Support.
Motion's support. Any other questions or concerns on it? Roll call both, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to residential solid waste and disposal, RFP.
So, this is something that we talked about maybe about a year or so ago, when we were going through a lot of our contracts, and have been doing RFPs for a lot of things. This is a contract that is up at the end of the year. I have prepared an RFP for services, should the commission be willing to move forward with that. I do have published dates and deadline dates. One thing to note in here is that we're actually planning for this to be a three and a half year contract. Reason being is that that way, it makes it so when we send the tax bills out in July, we actually have the correct number instead of estimates. So, the first year of this contract would in essence be a half year to get us in line with tax bills, and then it would normalize after that.
Any questions on it? Can I get, first, can I get a motion to approve? Ms. President?
I make a motion that we approve sending out request for bids on our solid waste collection and disposal services.
Support. Motion's support. Any questions on the RFP itself?
Well, I guess, well, I don't know if it's on it. I've been reading a lot that recycling is becoming a real big issue because, um...
China and supply.
Yeah, now people are having to pay to recycle, so it's not, you know, lucrative anymore, so is that going to become an issue that we could use that?
I haven't really heard anything about that yet, that it's tickled down to that level. Maybe something going off our RFPs, we may get a little bit different response from any of the companies that are offering that.
I know we've had an awful lot of trouble with this company to date, so hopefully, we either get somebody better, or, I don't know, it's just going to struggle this whole year with this company and trying to get a lot of stuff picked up.
There's a lot of areas. Ms. President?
Apparently, our recycling efforts mean that we ship this material to China, and rather than dumping most of it into the ocean, they decided not to accept some of this. We should look at whether this is even a viable thing and look for the reduction in cost and just have solid waste.
And that's a potential option that they may come back with us, is that some of these companies may be moving to where they no longer offer recycling.
We can always see, put out the RFP and see what comes back.
I could amend the language that if they're not going to be including that, that, you know, maybe they separate it out.
Yeah, I think it's just going to become more and more an issue, you know?
I think there's some things that are much more desirable and easier to recycle, and other things that just have become a little too costly. I think more so plastics have become a little too costly. Recycling like cardboard and paper, I think they do a pretty good job of doing that.
Well, some of it, some places were accepting pizza boxes, which sometimes they don't want them in there. It's a decrease in contamination on the box, which, you know, it's a big, big issue, but, I mean, I think it's just coming down quite short, so...
Any other questions or concerns on it? Hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Carry. Moving on to board vacancies. This is just an announcement. We're going to be looking for applications. Please turn, if anyone's interested, please turn in to the city clerk by December 3rd.
We actually might want to extend the deadline to December 10th.
December 10th?
Yes.
Okay. And we need one, we have one vacancy in the zoning board of appeals, we have one vacancy in the board of review, two in the historical commission, and four for the dangerous, the dangerous building board of appeals. That would be one citizen, one building contractor, one state, or two citizens, one building contractor, one state-registered architect or engineer. If anyone's interested, please get with Chris. And moving on to financial business, disbursements, including payroll for $1,163,335.84. Can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the total disbursements, including payroll, of $1,163,335.84.
Support. Any questions on it?
I see we're buying a couple new computers, and I don't have a problem with that, and we have to upgrade, but at $1,200, and there's such good deals out there, is this...
That actually includes the install as well. So the computers are under $1,000, and then all the loading of the software and the install included in that.
So you get charged for that most of the time? You should be able to do most of that yourself?
Well, with the SNA, I mean, everything is, has to be set up with the server, the email.
So this, so...
It's not something I have the ability to do.
No, but I mean, your whole cost here is misleading because it says it's for one computer, and it's not broken down to say that it's a computer, and how much that computer is versus what you're getting charged for all the upgrades. It just looks like we're paying $1,200 for eight computers.
Eight computers installed, yeah.
Yeah. You can get a nice one for about $300.
I mean, you have to keep in mind that there, there's shelf stuff that's for, you essence, home use, and then there's stuff that have more heavy-duty components in them that are for business use. And with these being in the plants, you have corrosion with the chemicals and everything, so.
Computer, I mean, it's just a HP computer that the average person would buy, so it's not everything difference there. I don't have problems replacing the computers, I'm just talking about the cost.
Any other questions? Hearing on roll call, both please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Nope.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we're moving on to preliminary financial station. I need a motion to receive and file on your financial statements. Mr. Avery.
Make a motion that we receive and file the preliminary financial statement.
Support. Motion's support. Any questions on the financial statements? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Here. City managers report.
Since the last report, I attended the Tifa meeting and fire authority. I also had a bit of a group meeting with Comcast up in Marysville. All the, in essence, business support people were there, and several other city managers. So, had a good conversation with them about some of the things coming down the pipeline with Comcast. That's it.
Any questions for the city manager? Hearing on, let's move on to Commissioner Privilege. Mr. Avery, can I have any support?
Yes. Not in any form or appearance. Few notes I made. We had a meeting to inform the public why the commission was putting a tax mileage proposal up for vote. We had dismally poor attendance. That either indicates that people have decided one or the other, they don't care, but anyway, there was a chance for people to learn. Unfortunately, something that did come up at the meeting, and we see more of it, is the attitude that, "Well, I'm only going to vote for it if it affects my road." Well, if you could just drop into that road and into your house without affecting anything else, and I have no idea where you live in the city then, but that apparently is a very short-sighted way to look at improving the city we live and, as had been mentioned before, the value of our property. I hear some things that indicate a lack of understanding of our governments, meaning that schools apparently are falling behind in the teaching of civics and history. Why we are a republic, not a democracy? What our history has done for us that we can learn from? It's sad to see this, and I hope people will pay more attention to that, especially with our election coming up, and see that our votes are based on our choice to live in a city, a city that has a rich history and is now capitalizing on some of that through our beautiful downtown area. I think this also affects our Tifa. We have voted to kill it as a commission. I think that's a short-sighted effect. There is still a chance, before it goes, for somebody to bring that up, and we can rethink that situation. We throw away a lot of money and the ability to capture that money, the city could use And the last thing that comes up is the voting for the marijuana. I don't know how many people in here have been affected by what this drug does to family This is, I believe, a very ill-informed thing. I just saw something today on the internet that states that have recently adopted recreational marijuana are showing higher incidence of traffic accidents. Please think about adding something else to our problems, people that aren't being as attentive as they should. And we do have an election coming up, so please come out and vote, and you have a chance to formulate the commission that will run this city. Thank you.
Mr. Clausen.
On the same note, it's your vote, and if you want it or you don't want it, but it is your right to vote and let us know once and for all. We know the roads are bad, and we're trying to do something with them. And this committee that the city formed with the youngsters in infrastructure and roads has worked quite hard on it to look for ways out and other ways to fund it. And this is, it's a five-year, and it's for roads only, so, thank you.
I just want to thank the Infrastructure Committee and our city manager Elaine for the, you guys did a great job at that village forum the other night, so thank you, you've done a great job putting all of that information together. I think, you know, when the meeting started, it was like, "We're here to present the facts," and I think you did a great job doing that. And I'm hoping that, you know, like, you know, Commissioner Avery said, there weren't a whole lot of people here, but I hope people did pick it up on the TV and, you know, got some, got some of the information to make an informed decision. And, you know, we know we need our roads fixed. I mean, the roads are bad everywhere, but we also know that if we don't do this, that we don't really have a Plan B right now, and it's going to take us forever to fix our roads unless we do something. So, as Commissioner Clausen said, go out, place your vote, please vote, please go and vote. And people sitting here, I'm preaching to the choir, but anybody else that's going to watch this, please just don't sit home on election night, just go out, cast your vote, and let us know what you're thinking. And, and note too, I also hope to see, you know, people there at Washington Life Center on the 22nd, so they can hear what the candidates have to say. I do not believe all candidates can attend that night, but I think there'll be, I'm thinking four there, so, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
I know you brought this up to you the other day, now that your bathrooms are close by the beach, if there's any way we can get a Porta-John down by there for the winter season, so we don't have the incidences like we had last year, the urinator issue. I know we have the two down farther, either moving one or getting another, so that we can kind of make sure people have someplace that they can go without doing it outside. So, it'd be something I think we should think of this year after last year's stuff. More fun note, Halloween's coming up, so watch out for the kids. Hopefully, they'll all have a good time, hopefully the weather will cooperate with us, and we'll have a great Halloween season. And also want to hope that the Mariners, they got in the playoffs, so let's hope they can go as far as they can this year. They've been doing pretty well for rebuilding their team again, so good luck to them in the playoff season, and let them have a safe Halloween.
Well, just a couple comments. I'd like to first kind of echo what Mr. Avery said, that in regards to Tifa, it's no surprise we all thought that that was a bad move, but we were all moved in. But on that same note, I hear everybody talking about roads to capture, the one-time capture from Tifa, since the board decided to dissolve. I think this board has the power to say that that one-time capture should go to the roads, not just into the general public. So I hope that the next board decides to make that move. That's it.
I don't have a whole lot tonight, just everybody have a good Halloween, be safe, and make sure everybody comes out to vote. It's, it's a civic duty that we actually vote. I mean, people have given their lives so we can vote and make these decisions, and I really feel that it's, and I brought my son to voting every year with me since I've been, since I've just been around, just to kind of encourage him to vote when he gets older. So I really think it's a huge responsibility for everybody. And it's not who you vote for, it's just that you vote, that everybody goes. I mean, we've got so much political divide today in both Lansing and in Washington, but it still comes down to all of us casting a ballot, so. That's all I got for tonight, so.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support. A motion's support, all in favor?